I can't get anything.
Wait, did my hair, did I get the makeup right? Okay. Okay.
There we go.
You're live.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special board meeting of USD 290 for the self-evaluation of the board. It is August 9th, 2021 at 6:04 PM. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six board members present tonight. Oh, are we good? Okay, all right, all right. We will, we will go ahead and do a roll call. Lydia Payne.
Here.
Harold Winkert.
Here.
Julie D'Andrio, present. Linda Alderman.
Present.
And Chris Cunningham.
Here.
And we are missing Shanda Olmsted this evening. So if there is a motion to call this meeting to order or approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that passes 6-0. So at this time, we will go ahead and proceed with the board evaluation process. And we will welcome Mr. Art Britton Hart.
Yeah, nice to see everybody. So I've met a few of you, and really not in person, which is hard. You know, so I think I've met a lot of you through our, through our online, our COVID. But tonight, I want to thank you for the time because I think this is one of the most valuable things that you, as a board, will do individually. If you've not done a self-eval before, it's just an opportunity for you to reflect and for the board to reflect as a whole about really the great things you're doing, but also maybe some of those areas that you need to approve on as a team. This is not a reflection, you know, of how good a policy or, or maybe some of the things you've done, infrastructure, anything like that, the goals you put forth. This is how you function as a team and how you really operate within that team. So this is, this will be an opportunity for you to kind of have some conversation with your colleagues, but also as a whole team as we, as we think about this evening.
Before you start, just a second. Dr. Cobb, in the past, we've always done this kind of around a table. Are we restricted by our?
We're gonna come out here.
We're gonna come out here? Okay, I didn't know if we could go in the other, okay, all right.
Yeah, we're gonna.
And are we continuing to stream, to stream this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
As long as we can stick to these three tables.
Okay. All right, perfect, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So we're gonna have a lot of conversation with you tonight, so it will be important. We'll bring Susan, I think, hello. We'll bring you along with us as we transition as well. So, so I want you to start thinking about what this really board self-evaluation means for you as a board team. When I say board team, that includes the seven board members and also the superintendent. So if that great eight, if you want to call it, functions at a high level, the students, the patrons, the staff in this district really prosper. If that board team at times struggles or maybe is not in tune, no pun intended, based on the picture, then the students, staff, and districts prosper. So I want you to think about this, and I try to put a visual for you tonight as we start to think about the importance of this self-eval. So real quick, how many years, anybody been on more than one term on the board? Okay, one, two, three? Okay, so a nice mix. And Susan, I couldn't tell if you raised your hand, sorry. So you'll have to shout out at me since I, you're, you're about this big, so right there.
Well, good, that's better that way.
Okay, okay. But this is a good visual for you, so you know over the time you've been on the board, whether you're new or whether you're experienced, it is nice every once in a while to maintain your car. So whether it's oil, whether it's belt, whether it's something, every one of you have taken your car into the shop over the last six months, let's say, to a couple of years. No different than what we expect of staff, like we've probably done this last week. We start to bring new staff back, we start to bring our existing staff back. What are we doing? We're providing professional development, we're allowing them to have conversation, we're wanting them to start to think about professional growth. And it's really critical that our board has the same opportunity. So kudos to you as board to take this opportunity and kudos to, to be honorable because at times, a lot of our board members are like, babe, I'm elected and if they don't like what I'm doing, they're gonna vote me off, right? But really, the purpose is not whether you get voted back or voted out, it's how you function as a team with the success we have. So think of your team as a functioning car. And so when we have problems with this car, Dean?
Where? Right now. That was me.
So when we have problems with this car, we need to think about, that service engine light soon comes on, and I don't think there's probably any emergency right now, but we certainly want to be proactive, right? And that's, step on here, it's kind of a little different level.
Yeah.
Right? It's kind of, kind of odd. So we want to be proactive, though, in this service. So Ms. Payne, I doubt you wait until your car totally blows up before you take it in the shop, right? You probably get your oil changed kind of on a regular basis. Yeah. So maybe your spark plugs your belt. So it's important to think about before that light comes on, like we're doing tonight, let's have some proactive approach to this, let's start thinking about it. So what you do, if we think around the same theme of this automotive, we'd maybe take a dipstick. We'd pull that dipstick out. Harold, are you a mechanical kind of person?
I am not.
So who checks the oil at your house?
Whoever wants to.
And do you do it frequently?
Oh, no.
No, never, okay.
Why would we check that?
So that's why I put this picture up first, okay? Yeah. So how about, is anybody, Chris, do you change, do you check your oil frequently? Do you feel like that benefits you?
Uh, yeah.
And why do you do that?
Keep from causing engine damage.
Yeah, so.
Was that the answer I was should have given?
Yeah, so if you'll give Harold your number tonight, so next time the engine blows up, he'll have your direct connection, all right?
I think I have his number.
So there's really two ways to look at this. You guys are taking the approach that, hey, we're gonna check dipstick, we're gonna make sure the level is where it needs to be. If we pull that dipstick out, Chris, it's a little low, what do you do?
Uh, put more oil in it and maybe look and see if you have a leak.
Yeah. If it's full?
Just did it yesterday.
And if it's full, what do you do?
Continue on.
Kind of like, yes, this is great, I bought a good car, and now I have something that's reliable, right? So as a board, I want you to think about that from a year-to-year span. What can you do to grow your team, but also take that dipstick from time to time, especially when we have adversity, especially when we have tough times with the board team? How do we continue to kind of do self-evaluation and self-check? We call, we're gonna call that general maintenance. So if you want to think of it in terms of a visual tonight, you can think of the self-eval as general maintenance, okay, to your board team, all right? And if you also want to take it one step further, anybody got a big V8 pickup in here?
There you go.
I like this. So let's say, Harold, let's say one of those cylinders isn't, isn't working right. You feel like you, you would notice that driving it? You feel kind of funny?
You lose power.
You'd lose power? Chris, what about you? Have you ever had it where it doesn't feel like it's?
Yeah, I've had that happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've put engines and stuff before.
So think about this, there's eight cylinders, there's seven board members, superintendent, and if just one of them out of whack starts to be a little rocky, doesn't it? Maybe sounds funny?
Yeah.
And it may just kind of feel like when you're driving down the road, oh, man, it doesn't get, it's not good. Think about the shaft there, the crankshaft, okay? I don't, this is, there's no quiz at the end about mechanical automotive, okay? So you're off the hook there. But think about that shaft as your board goals. I know you guys have a strategic plan, I know you have board goals. Those are the board goals, and if they're, if you're in tune with the eight of you, oh, man, it's like a, it's like a sewing machine. It's just gonna kind of purr. Anybody sews? Just me?
I have the truck, but I don't sew.
You have a truck and no sewing machine, okay, well. I bet you could trade in for a couple sewing machines. So think about that sewing machine, when it's running perfect, it just humps. And that's what we want as a board, we want you guys at the board table. That doesn't mean you don't argue, that doesn't mean you don't have difference opinions, that doesn't mean you're not passionate about why, what, and how you're doing it. But at the end of the day, when we leave the board table, we want the, we want the engines in sync. Maybe a 5-2 boat, maybe a closed boat, maybe a little contentious because a lot of, you know, animosity and adversity out in our world, you have to, the seven board members have to deal with. At the end of the day, we're gonna support them another when we leave this place, so that it runs and is for the best interest of the kids. Fair? So that's kind of sets the landscape of tonight, okay? That's kind of our focus. We surveyed you through a survey, okay? And you have the hard copy results in front of you. There's really six areas that we're gonna unpack. And we're gonna let you do the work, and you have the conversations down here. But the six areas are very easy. Board member actions. So what do you do, attitudes, behaviors, actions you do at the board table and away from the board table that are conducive to this team and potentially at times hurtful or detrimental to this? So some of you are like, oh, man, I hope he's not talking about me. But you're gonna have a chance for yourself to kind of reflect. Meetings of the board, so we're doing those with a common. Guarantee the clerk gets a little nervous when, you want to get into executive session, they don't make the right motion. Am I right? Ms. Clerk?
She completely trusts us.
This is not common, okay? I will tell you. Normally, what's common is you lay this by your bed, and if you're having trouble sleeping, then you pull it out, okay? But, uh, yeah, sorry, I put you on the spot. So do you get a little nervous when you go into executive session, we don't make the right motion? A little bit, yeah, okay. So meetings of the board, we're gonna talk about that. Vision and planning. Okay, how, how far do you vision out? How well do you plan? Do you have goals? Do you know what those goals are? Do you work on those goals on a monthly basis? Are they centered around student success? Policy. Every action that you take at the board table, every one. Every one is in the form of a policy. Whether it's written down with a Kansas statute, whether it's written down in lines with KSB, or whether it's just in the meeting notes, every one of those are policy. That's your decision, that's your right, and you're privileged. Finance. Little important, fiscal responsibility, right? We got taxpayer dollars, we have the resources of our community, it's pretty important. So, and the last part, how do we build that board and superintendent relationship? Maybe the most important thing. All six of those are important, don't get me wrong. But we're in the business of helping boards, we're in the business of helping boards hire superintendents. And I can tell you, the other five don't matter near as much if the board and the superintendent can't jive and be thinking on some things. That doesn't mean they always agree, that doesn't mean that you don't have some direct feedback from the superintendent, have some direct, you know, things that, hey, we need to do better, or, hey, we're doing fine here. That relationship between the board and superintendent is critical, critical. The longevity, the research says, the longer you can have those leaders in place, the better off you are. But they're gonna need some support. Okay. So enough of me talking, I've kind of given you just a little bit of an overview. And right now, I want you to turn to page 16 for me. This should be your workbook for, for tonight. This is an opportunity, you, you write in this, you scribble on it, and you circle on it, take pictures of it, whatever you want to do. Susan, I apologize. I do not have electronic copy for you. Dr. Cobb's volunteered, he's gonna be your direct partner, and you will put it up in the video window. And then, uh, the clerk, which I haven't, I missed her name, Terry, sorry. Terry's gonna actually give you a hard copy, so you'll have one as well, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. So, all right, so we're gonna be on 16, and the first thing I want you to do, you have a note card in front of you. And so Susan, here at home, if you don't have a note card, just get a piece of paper, front back, you're gonna need two of them, so if you just need two pieces of paper. But the first thing I want you to do, I want you to do this individually. I want you to review page 16 only, folks, don't, don't deviate from the plan, just 16 only. And on the front side of the first note card, I want you to take just a quick glance. If you will, this is like your 30,000-foot view, we're, we're just at a high level. This is all eight of you, seven technically, but all seven of you's feedback. And I want you to identify, in your opinion, based on the data, what are the two big areas that you feel like current performance we're good at? And if you look at the, the chart here, you can either use the flow chart, you can use the numbers, depending on what kind of person you are, what kind of visual or number-oriented person you are. But on the left side, the blue bars, that's your current performance. The right side, which is gonna be the second sticky note, is where maybe the importance, okay? You're not gonna need the, you're not gonna need the second, or the, excuse me, you're not gonna need the importance at this point. Your job, two note cards, first one, top two, second note card, lower two. Okay? Questions, Susan?
I don't know, I can't see it.
That's where Dr. Cobb's comes in. Can I move this for you somewhere?
You're gonna be my Vanna White, aren't you?
Oops, I'm gonna let Deion do it. He doesn't let anybody take.
Can that to Dr. Cobb? He doesn't let grab that microphone stuff.
I don't know that he's ever been called the Vanna White. I, that, that's an interesting.
So top two on note card one, lowest two on note card.
The top two things we do, that we think we do good?
Based on the data.
Oh, based on the data.
Yeah, based on the data on page 16.
So everybody's gonna have the same answer at night?
Yeah, we're gonna have the same answers.
Potentially, okay. Are you ready?
Or is it what we think should be the top two?
You're gonna look at the data and interpret it through your own eyes.
Well, then, forget that. All right. This is the data.
Correct.
It only.
The board's opinion, but in this case, we're looking at the data through that.
Current, not importance.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Top two, lower two.
Yeah, hold on, he's, he's gonna look you there. Oh, you're upside down, but we're upside down, but we're gonna get there.
Now, then the bottom two? Okay.
So now I gotta be able to see it. So, uh, if you look at that, the, the red bars are the bars that we identified as where we think we should be, the importance of each of those things. The blue bars are where we indicated that we were. So the idea is to identify.
So it's where we are. I'm gonna need more note cards. It's where we are, right? I, I need more note cards, I'm screwing up.
Well, maybe that the gap between where you think we should be and where we're actually at might be the indicator.
Hmm, see, I don't agree with the data.
That's okay, because it's just a, it's just kind of a guess. Maybe policy in, in board meetings?
About another 30 seconds, again, just top two, lower two, just how you interpret the data.
So improve upon and lower two would look to me like you're talking about a gap would be board members and.
Just write down what Ryan says.
Maybe finance.
Yeah, finance, me in there as well.
Okay, as we transition here, I want you to take your two cards with you, okay? And I want you to think about the two areas that you put down as strengths and the two areas that you put down as possible weak or, if you'd like to call it, growth areas. And I want you to make some predictions of why, why I told you not to go away from page 16. You can make a few predictions of why you think they're strengths. So Linda made a comment, I'm gonna use her, she made the comment, she goes, well, I don't think this is right, I have other ideas. Which is a great comment, wasn't it? So now you're gonna make those predictions for the two strengths and two weaknesses. Why do you think they're low? Why do you think they're high? And you're gonna, better yet, just predictions would be like strategies, there would be maybe responsibilities and roles that you have at this table. So why are those strengths? So let's, let's play one out. Board member actions. So if it's a strong. If that was one of your strengths, Julie might say, well. Because we make sure everybody's voice is heard at the table before we make a decision. That might be a strength, for example, for board member actions. Ms. Payne might say, it might be a weakness for us, and she goes, you know what? I think one reason is because when I go, when I leave to get in my car on the way home, I see people talking. So she may identify that as a characteristic of the board, okay? So this is the type of conversation we're gonna have, and it's not about pointing to you, pointing to you, or looking this way, it's about us growing as a team, okay? So right now, all I'm asking is for you to predict, okay, on that card, okay, on the front still, why it's a strength and why it's growth, okay? Now, before you start doing that, hold tight. I'm gonna have you find a partner, and you're gonna find a spot to kind of settle with out here, okay? Right by your shoulder. So you're gonna take your two cards with a partner, one of them, you'll have a group of three, you're gonna be with Dr. Cobb's. And you're gonna predict why they're strengths and why they're weaknesses, okay? What questions might you have? Okay, find a partner, maybe somebody you don't traditionally sit by at the board table, okay? And then you're gonna find a place to sit, and I'll give you about five minutes here, and we'll check in. Yes, yes, yep. Yep, you'll need that as a resource. So you're gonna have either one group of three and a group of two, or you're gonna be paired up with Dr. Cobb, and you have. We have three groups of guys. I guess I'm confused, and that's one thing we've got going for us, so we're good.
But that's the worst thing you do all night.
Group be good?
I feel like I have to do my passes, I usually do be there the rest of the night.
Um, if, 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 and the other thing, in comparison to what stance you're taking coming into the interaction. If you assume positive intent, then that will be there. If you don't assume positive intent, it won't be there.
But that's partially true, because then you're not truly based on the data. It's, we're making, we're making it subjective, I guess, is what, what you're saying, we're making it subjective.
Right.
And maybe that's where the, where the, uh, that is. And maybe you start to think about more, and you start to look at your board values.
Yeah, I think, I think this may just be, I think, yeah. Uh, I don't, I don't know that people really think about sources. I mean, that's, whereas when it comes to policy, we know there's a, we're on the, we're on the, we're looking at each other. Form a subjective approach. I feel this might overcome one talking to me or something like that, which is really subjective, but they're getting out.
And I would agree with that trust, I, I, I don't always feel like we have that across the board.
Right, yeah. I thought there are, I, I can hear it from this side, not being in the room, you just, the, the manner in which questions are asked. You know, because there's an agenda.
So maybe, maybe I look at this with a, from a different lens. But a four would indicate to me that those things are incredibly important and that we do this perfectly. We don't have a single thing on our list that our board would indicate that we perform below 3.3 on. Which in my mind would indicate that overall, so we're looking at this from a, from a grand, you know, sort of. Even the things that we have a gap where we want to be where we currently act. We're still performing at a pretty significant level. Certainly, we have some rooms for improvement, but, and that's what this is about, but I think what we have to recognize that, that we, that we do have, um, for the most part, a positive board atmosphere based in the way that we self-evaluate ourselves. And I think if not, we would see numbers well below the value of three. Does that, does that make sense to you, Susan?
Yeah. And I agree, if this were a zero to four scale, then we'd look at it a much differently.
But it is a zero to four, well, it's a one to four scale.
Right, but I'm saying if you're on, if you're at that.
Yes, yes, I mean, because there would be, there would be very much less of a gap there. I do want, do you think the reason that we.
In about one more minute, again, you just want to make some short, quick predictions, strengths and improvement areas. Or strengths and areas of why they are.
Policies that we implement are provided for us. The, the other things that we, that we do in terms of policy, we, we tend to run off of what KSB provides. The rest of them are, um, are things that, that are more about curricular needs and so on and so forth. The meeting is, again, something that is very much a kind of provided, six of our, our board members, well, five of our board members tend to not participate in the, in the development of the agenda. Typically comes down to vice president, president, helping to formulate the opinion, or the, the agenda. Do you think that has anything to do with the fact that those things are kind of pre-developed? And has any, um, indications to lie closer to.
Okay. Let's kind of wrap your conversations up.
Versus what our expectations are there?
Yeah, I think so, and I think it's just in terms of objective data. In fact, we're, you know, more of an objective, anytime you're dealing with relationships, it's always gonna be more subjective. And there isn't as much of a structured process. Uh, you should call this department at first, or the, you know, because he's the guy we hire. You know, we don't, we haven't really delved into that level, you know, so we believe this person or that person, not our hired experts.
Okay.
That, that's where we kind of push more.
I'm gonna pull you back together. So Josh has volunteered to be our scribe, and we kind of have some conversation. So now I started to hear a few of you struggle already, which this is good, this is part of the activity. You're like, I don't, I don't think that's true, or, I don't feel like that, but it just shouldn't be our strength, it shouldn't be our weakness. So now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a little bit, we're just gonna check in with you folks, each group, briefly about strengths improvement. We'll actually dive into data and see what it says. Now I want you to keep in mind, this is an individual board self-evaluation, each one of you gave input. We're taking those averages, we're putting those things together. We're taking those averages, we're putting those things together, and now you have the information in front of you. So if you think, uh, potentially, if somebody marks something low, somebody marks something high, we have to kind of dig down a little bit and try to understand a little bit better based on the data, why somebody would perceive it going well, and maybe why somebody would perceive it going well. That's a blessing of this type of activities for you, to start to think. Because Julie thinks it's going really good, she goes home and I show her, oh, that's, that's working, that's working, we've had all the time, that's great. Harold, Harold leaves and goes, oh, we got a lot of work to do, right? So we're seeing that reflected somewhat in our data, that's okay, so that's why we're gonna have this conversation. Josh is gonna look down our strengths here, okay? Maybe don't play into the bullseye, but you have a lot of good things going. So I want you to report out on your two strength areas, what are some predictions you made of why their strength for you? And if we'll just start with this group and go that way. So just shout out a couple of predictions for your strength areas that you think are good.
Why we think of those areas?
Yep.
Well, meetings is a great, lots of, for example, one of them, you know, well run.
Okay, organized, well-run, smooth, okay, good.
Uh, we have time for everyone to get given, versus, we used to get data and stuff on Friday, then have it on Monday, now we have it on Thursday. And then we have a lot of data to be, to be, to be, to be, to be.
You've got plenty of preparation time to be prepared to report meeting hours.
And often times you get the information things you have to go on, you forget twice, so we've had a long.
Gotcha. So first meeting, uh, just information only, an opportunity to hear your report, maybe some opportunity to kind of reflect, have some conversation. Come back the next meeting, maybe take action. Okay, great. How about this, number one, what are some strengths that you, you identified, what are your predictions of?
We, uh, we strive to achieve what is best for us.
Okay.
I think, you know, we do some, we do some, uh, 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 difference, if we still try, we may see it.
So as a whole group, you feel like, at the end of the day, the focus is what's best for the district regardless of maybe, my opinion might be different. Okay, good. Yes.
How does our, and do we want policy?
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, what about policy?
We put it out, Sean, because we have KSB racing for us.
Okay, any, uh, time, when you do it, and do it structured, and that, yeah? Okay, you, okay, annual review, we try to align with KSB, they do, we want to say we were a document maker.
Seems like.
Reflect that.
Well, they, uh, they're probably not the best, uh, for policy, right?
So now what we're doing is trying to put on these little special ones as a microphone. Magnifying, thank you, magnifying glass, so really dig down deep a little bit. How about in the fourth area?
The screen was low just because Terry does a summer job. And it's been proven through years and years and years of audit that, I mean, even the auditors that Terry does a summer job, so we can really trust her with what she says and we listen to her. And our district has been in really good shape because of her, so I think this.
When we were talking about the district warrant, of course, we want to show where our line of interest is.
Well, we get a list with your sentence.
Okay. Do you have another one to set us up? We didn't agree on the board. Okay. We thought we could all do pretty well. Even if we do disagree.
We discussed things, we made a spread, but that's okay.
So the great thing about working through predictions is now you're starting to feel like, come on, let's see what I should say. If we're thinking this, if we see globally what the overall information says, I'm sure a couple of me, I know, I told you, I did it for Chris, so I'm not ratting him out, but I was like, went back to the pages, now you're gonna start to dig in a little bit why it is the way it is, okay? We're gonna use this, we're gonna come back to this, so essentially what this is gonna help us do, before we leave tonight, we want to identify, are there any probabilities as a board, I'm going to give to Dr. Cobb as we move forward this year, to help continue to develop our tools, okay? And again, I would use that, these are predictions at this point, okay? We have not looked at the data, so that's what our job is now. So individually, okay, I'm gonna have you go through each section, it's gonna be a pretty quick glance, but I want you to go through each section, and I want you to circle, these are individual responses, I'm gonna use Ms. Page real quick. So if you think about the individual responses for each area, there's six areas, you're gonna go through and you're gonna do a quick review, you're gonna circle the two highest, and you're gonna underline maybe the two that have the lowest average, okay? Now, one thing I want you to keep in mind, and I use the apple picture up here, so if you see all the green apples and the one that maybe is red, there might be another one that's red, when you start to have a discrepancy in your perception of how things work at the board table, you may get a little bit less of an average, okay? So I use this table over here. There's just no way that the board members' actions are wrong, there's just no way, okay? You've heard them say, say, there's no way, I forget it, that can't be right. That's a good prediction, I'm more pushback on that, okay? Based on their opinion. Now, when you look at the data, and you start to dig into there, you may identify, identify there have been one or two people that graded it differently than what your perception is. That's okay. The reason we're doing this is we're trying to identify, Julie thinks it's an issue we need to work on, I don't know everybody's name, sorry, I keep getting the same people tonight. Sorry, Julie, you happen to be our first person. And then Chris may say, Julie doesn't know what she's talking about, this isn't how I feel. That's when, where this data comes into mind, so even as a board member individually, now you just start to make some decisions on it. If that's the case, if Chris really feels like this, how do we as a board fix it? It's not about trying to point out Susan, she happens to be online, I know she was the one to mark this, no, it's more about hazard group, if she feels that way, how do we help her not feel about that, right? The example I'll use for you is my wife, I've been married twenty-two years. Doesn't matter what I say, but if she perceives that I'm being critical for her, she probably rises. Okay? I'm not gonna change her mind, I'm gonna have to be less critical. You know what I'm saying, Harold?
I do.
Yeah. So it is not that I defend myself and I say, hey, I think you're, that's how she feels. And so as a board, we need to figure out how we can make that work. So each area, you're gonna circle the two highest, and you're gonna underline the two lows. This is just an opportunity for you to unpack.
Can I take a circle of these too?
Okay.
Circle the ones.
So you can, Susan, you see that?
Yeah, the question.
You're muted. Let me see, can you, can you read it? So. We're gonna try to identify two areas that have been weird or occur. Let's play again, what is it, talk to us. So you're gonna underline, you're gonna circle, so you do the two highest individual responses. So what I want you to do is kind of investigate, when you look through here, which one are the two highest and the two lowest? That way we can start to have a pretty good idea of what this is.
Highest is based on media, so that's.
Highest as a group or highest individuals? So it's somewhat first perception, so if you had two, one, three, six. I would look for the span, kind of using the apple idea, if you have a large span, to me, you're gonna have, like, this is perfect, this was probably perfect, this was in the middle. As far as maybe being the lowest, as far as perception of how we, in that particular area. Does that help?
We perform the highest in confidentiality, is that right?
So we look actually, would be this one.
Say, circle the two highs.
Yes, and this one.
Right.
Yeah. Pay attention to your gaps, so this will be a question. So let's consider.
I don't understand that.
So, yeah. See, here we go. Looking at the next one here. Well, you're a master nothing, so I'm touching on your head now. So this is board member actions. We have several that are all fours.
Is this, is this, is that the same person?
Yes.
So there's somebody that Susan knows a lot, and less of those, and the rest of her, any thoughts?
Yes, so you may consider that to be an outlier. Well, I think it's probably also interesting to note that the individual that would have identified that we were lower on our attempt to assure community values also indicated that was less important to me, community values. Certainly, that's a good investment, as well as strength in personal confidence. Rating the lowest was also the one that indicated that it's less important. Yes, for each state this section. So obviously, the highest rating.
And then, well, Mr. All members understand the procedures, you see that it's on the agenda. Have one right there where you're at.
Yeah. I don't think we have to do the importance piece. Decision on many elements. Looks like our highest, very good reviews, progress towards goals. Looks like our lowest, two-way conversation of the community, which would also be identified within the accreditation process. Policies. Looks like our highest split between processes.
Like, average-wise, what are between us?
That was this one right here. Input from effective authority. And the other three here on the team.
Same, yeah. I think you gotta do that bucket in service together.
Yeah, that's probably true. That's probably true. Uh, super important measure. Looks like we're really good at doing an evaluation. Looks like these two. Redirect specific complaints and delegate authority to the secret set of the yard. Yeah.
A light picture.
There we are. So probably not gonna. So. Okay, this group has one left, so about, give yourself a drink if you need to, but we're about ready to wrap up here. Okay, I'll pull you back together here. And so, honest reflection, if you have one, is anybody, does anybody feel like a little bit, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that word, but when you perceive something a certain way, then when you see your colleagues, maybe perceive it somewhere lower than you or higher than you, how's that make you feel? How's that help you as an individual board to know that? Maybe wanna volunteer how they feel about that, either they're on the, somebody perceives it different, higher or lower, how's that make you feel as a board? Julie wanna volunteer?
I don't think I maintain that, I can't.
I'm like, she keeps, she keeps looking at it, I'm thinking, she's volunteering as the board president, she's raising her hand.
I'm taking off. I think it's okay.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, you talk about, uh, well, uh, quite a lot of the time, I'm not sure.
So let's keep that thread a little bit, how do, how by us knowing that sometimes our perceptions maybe aren't the same as our colleagues, how does that help us have better conversation and bring people along, based on some of the hard work we have to do, how does that help?
I think it helps a lot, you know, you learn your views, and just like I said, you know, I think we're also learning from different experiences in college, you know, I mean, I'm not sure about, I may not be as, you know, part of the world, I'm not, so they also may be a gap back from where. So I think that's, I also think that's why you say the person.
I think that diversity is good, because there's been a lot of times I came to meetings, I don't mind, I don't mind, and I listened to fellow board members talk, Dr. Cobb, who represents, I think, a lot of minds and changes, but look at it in their glasses, like, I'm finding a call. I think diversity.
It is so important, what you're, what you're spending time with tonight is allowing you to process your own individual thoughts and also your teammates, because obviously we're starting to have some feelings that, I think it's going great, and it is going great, don't get me wrong, but there's some people who think it could go a little better, or better yet, it could go a little differently. And that's great feedback for Dr. Cobb's report to say, hey, if we're gonna continue to grow forward, how do we make this team, not all seven O, but how do we make it where everybody feels like they get what they need, and bringing the, kind of like the roles and your perspective to the table and feel better? If I really care about, let's say, vision of mining, I want to spend some time talking about it, right? If we think it's going well as a board and we never get to talk about it, I'm gonna spend a little bit more time talking about those. So, good reflection, anybody else wanna add before I move on? So we're about three quarters of the way through here, this last thirty minutes is about you individually and us as a team, and we gotta get a little bit of work done here as we walk out, so we have some priorities. These priorities are gonna be formed in your thoughts and your input, and this is gonna help guide the work of the board, but more importantly, how we function as a team, less about what goals we're gonna do as far as student success, but more about how we're gonna work together as a grading, okay? So with your partners there, this is gonna be a little tougher, so I had you somewhat individually go through each one of the six areas, and automatically already pick the two high and the two low, okay? Now what I want you to do is go back, I'm not gonna give you a particular number, okay? Because if I tell you three, you know, then you're gonna hone in on three, there may be four you like, or maybe two. But through all six of those, I want you to identify the highest ones, where you feel like these are the most strengthened oriented for us, these are the individual responses, okay? Within each one of the six areas. You're gonna put those as a group on sticky note, one per sticky note. So if this team, for example, has three separate strengths, and for example, has strength that's eight, let's, I'm gonna go to board action, give you an example, one of the strengths is, we have high confidentiality during closed meetings at the board. That would be a strength. Okay, that would be one, and if you have two more, you'd put two more up there. This would encompass all six of the actions, okay? You're gonna do the same thing with the lowest. I'm gonna give you a little bit of a hint, this is where we wanna end, folks. Real easy to talk about what we're doing really good at, okay? Okay, we can talk LeBron James, he's really good defense, he gets defensive players here. He's probably a bad example, he's pretty good at assists, he's pretty good at scoring too. Maybe a weakness of his is rebounding, okay? But that probably is not something he always automatically thinks. He thinks about scoring, assists, and defense. This is the harder part of the work tonight, okay? So through all those actions, through the six areas, I want you to identify as major one. Now, I will caution you, if you have more than five, you're probably going too deep. If you have less than two, okay, you're probably not doing enough, okay?
Two for every, for every section, or two total?
Total, so you went individually now, right, with, through each area, right? And you did two high, two low. Now, as a group, you're gonna do the whole, all six board. Yeah, two to five, and that, I'm gonna give you the range, so if you feel like there's five, great, if you feel like there's two, that's great. Okay, that's a great question. So Julie says, is this based on the data, or is it based on your group perception, it's based on perception now? We've unpacked the data about as much we're gonna pack, and now it's the board's job to figure out where we're gonna go. All right, Susan.
For board member actions, I think we've got confidentiality high.
Yes. I honestly was very surprised.
I know, I was too, I was probably one of them.
Two to five. Susan, is what I'm hearing, you say that you're surprised that it's the science it is, because I think that we're not as good as that as the data would indicate.
So that's an area of, is that what you're saying?
I think so. And I.
One per post.
I think that ties to the coma issue. All right. I was, I was really surprised that the board members don't assume that community values and aspirations are upheld. I was really surprised it not being low.
Yeah.
It'll be an interesting conversation as to why we think that is. And is that based upon individuals believing that other board members aren't taking into account community needs, or persons indicating that they themselves are not taking into account to be the names? Because the board is a whole.
So I think that, of course, we have seven people, and four people feel like seven people are not in college, we're gonna be rating them low, so that does a little bit, yeah. That's why I don't know.
All right, let's talk about individual meetings.
I'm surprised to see about the two meeting days, I just can't remember very, very good.
Yes. So. So. Yes.
But I would hope.
I think, maybe the one that's a celebrate, most is regularly reviewing and evaluating targets towards its goals, that is one of the main functions in the board. The fact that we scored high, I think that's a positive. Also think that a need to improve, again, within our accreditation, that we probably need to do more to win conversation, now it shows up here as well.
Just writing.
So what's the.
I know.
Who are you?
Good for you.
Do you want, if we have a term to conclude, is there a base there, or is it, I think, that they were a part of that decision or what, just the conversation, is that they been actively? That's why I was so.
So if you wanted to do another one, what I heard, people talking about was how well off we are from the findings. There's one of the highs that the district has found by the Rockwell Alts, most physical response to our students.
Little tiny table.
Can I see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you should be putting your posted notes up on the wall, so should have strength weaknesses, you should be putting those up right now. You have eighteen people currently. Do you want our strengths over here? Check and see what's going on. We'll get them on the next screen. Emily!
I think.
Still with candy. Got improvements? That's a good thing, I guess, maybe? Okay, so for sake of time, all right, two things are gonna happen here, so I'm gonna try to move through. So Dr. Cobb's, at, at your next convenience, whether it's through a Friday note or what have you, can give you self-evaluation for yourself. Julie only, Payne only, etc. Then there is a letter in here. There's an envelope with your name on it, and some letter heading there, I just want you to write what you're willing to commit to as far as your own individual attitudes, behaviors, thinking about your self-evaluation as it is reflected in the board. Fair? That was kind of our final activity, now the one thing I want you to do here, and I'm gonna do this quickly, you're gonna have two dots, I want you to come up here. I apologize, we're gonna be just kinda cutting this a little bit close here. You're gonna put two dots on the areas that you think should be priorities, that Dr. Cobb's works as a board and the, and the president VP to start to think about. For example, we're a little bit low in visioning and planning, for example. Those are gonna be things that we do intentionally as a board, based on our self-evaluation over the next four months to continue to improve, okay? You were gonna put those in between, in one of these boxes, so you're gonna have two, so you pick the box that which you think as an individual board member we should work on. Dr. Cobb, you actually have Susan's as well.
Yep.
Let me leave you guys out. All right, everybody clear, so your two dots, pick each box that you think are the two priorities. And then I will have those written up and send those to your superintendents, to you as a board.
All right, where would you like me to put your two dots for improvement?
Confidentiality.
When I look at you, you're like, something, you wanna say something.
All right, okay, so we did a point here, we did a chart.
Yes, there you go.
All right, uh, you wanna take it? All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, we're good. Got it. Thank you, Dean.